Good evening and welcome to the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting for June 8th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance sealed with flag. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick housekeeping announcement, Supervisor Patrice Tureen is on Zoom tonight, so we do have a full board. So we will now turn it over to J.C. for the announcements.
Thanks Fran. On Monday, June 5th, White Marsh Township welcomed Andrew Thomas as our new Fire Marshal. Andrew resides in Plymouth Meeting with his wife and son. Welcome to Andrew. The Public Works Crew established a rain garden, as many of you saw coming into the complex today on the right-hand side of the entrance. Drive. This area will capture water from the downspouts from this building and the driveway to soak back into the ground. Planning and seeding still must be performed to complete this project. Great job so far to the Public Works Crew. And I know this is something that we're all excited about. Aqua will be replacing a water main on Butler Road between Militia Hill and Campus Drive starting Tuesday, June 13th. Closures are scheduled for 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the next three weeks. On Friday, June 16th, at Cedar Grove Park, our Movies in the Park series continues with the Pixar production of Finding Nemo. All movies begin at dusk. Wishing everyone a happy and safe Father's Day on Sunday, June 18th. And the Board of Supervisors are happy to announce the Fourth of July Parade will be held on Tuesday, July 4th, at 10:00 a.m. The parade begins at the White Marsh Township Building on Germantown Pike and goes down Germantown Pike where it ends at Miles Park. The Lions Club of White Marsh will be hosting a community picnic immediately following the parade with music, free hot dogs, and complimentary water while supplies last. Anyone interested in participating in the event should contact the Parks and Recreation Department at 610-828-7276 as soon as possible to register. And it is free. Lastly, a thanks to our many sponsors for the wonderful community event. We hope to see you there. And just a note that the township offices will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th in observance of Independence Day.
Thanks, J.C. Now, we're going to read a few proclamations, and we'll start first with the Pride Month proclamation. For that, I will turn it back over to Vice Chair Toll.
Thank you, Fran. For Pride Month 2023, the LGBTQ community is valued and its members are vital contributors to White Marsh Township's culture and economy. Whereas, the LGBTQ+ community has faced a long history of discrimination, violence, and bullying that continues today. Whereas, White Marsh Township is dedicated to fostering a diverse community inclusive to all, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and welcoming and standing with our LGBTQ+ friends, family, and neighbors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, do hereby declare the month of June as Pride Month and encourage township residents to show their pride and support of our LGBTQ+ friends, family, colleagues, and neighbor. Resolved this day, the 8th of June, 2023.
Thanks, J.C. And now, we'd like to read the Juneteenth proclamation. I'll turn that over to Supervisor Boyle Nestor.
Thanks, Fran.
You're welcome.
This is an honor to read this. Juneteenth, 2023 proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation taking effect on January 1st, 1863. And whereas, the Thirteenth Amendment was ratified on December 6th, 1863. And whereas, word of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed over two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching enslaved African-Americans in the South and southwestern states and territories. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, do hereby declare June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth and encourage all township residents to celebrate and reflect upon the significance of African-American heritage in our nation and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And we're actually going to jump down to resolutions before I read the next resolution. And so, we'll go to, "Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-16 supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States' 250th Anniversary in 2026?"
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, so this is a resolution. This is exciting. The 250th Anniversary of the United States will be in 2026. And the Pennsylvania General Assembly, under former Governor Wolf, created the Commission, which is the America 250 PA, which will really look at the Commonwealth and Pennsylvania's role in the nation's past, present, and moving forward in the future. We have been asked by our state Representative Daly, our state Senator Hughes, that we pass this resolution to show our support of the Commission that was established to recognize the 250th Anniversary of the United States. So that is what is before you this evening. It's ceremonial, but certainly shows our support for the history of this nation and Pennsylvania's integral role in it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call to roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Mcusker.
Yes. Resolution carries. Now, I'll read the resolution in full. A resolution of White Marsh Township Montgomery County, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States' Semi-Quintcentennial. Whereas, the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Wolf created the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States' Semi-Quintcentennial, America 250 PA, in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th Anniversary of the United States in 2026 and Pennsylvania's integral role in that event, and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas, America 250 PA hopes to engage all citizens of the Commonwealth, bring the Commonwealth's history into the conversation, so Pennsylvanians can better understand the origins and multiple perspectives of issues facing our Commonwealth and nation today, and use history to encourage and inspire future leaders, celebrate the contributions of Pennsylvanians to not only the Commonwealth's history, but also to our nation's history. Whereas, America 250 PA wishes to leave a lasting impact on the next generation of Pennsylvanians and to spark an interest which will ignite the drive for them to appreciate all the triumphs, trials, and tribulations which contributed to the Commonwealth for which they are now writing their own history. And whereas, America 250 PA will have numerous officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the next five years to inspire future leaders and celebrate all Pennsylvanians' contributions to the United States over the past 250 years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that White Marsh Township hereby endorses America 250 PA and its mission to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate the rich history and diversity of the state. And it is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the township's state senator and representative and PSATs, adopted this 8th day of June, 2023. All right, thank you. Move to, "Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from May 11th, 2023?"
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, "Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-17, amending the White Marsh Township 401A money purchase plan to permit a loan policy for hardships?"
So moved.
Second.
And we'll turn this over to Kevin. It's always a pleasure to have Kevin at the meeting, especially when he's smiling.
I'm always smiling. Thank you. Back in 2021, when I got, after I got here, Rick and I sat down and we took all the loans out of the 457 and the 401 plan. Because the loans were, were giving the employees the opportunity to take a loan back during COVID, during 2020, when there was a lot of unknown things. What we didn't think of was a hardship program. Most 457s and 401 plans let you take a loan if you have a hardship. You have to prove the financial hardship to either Rick or myself. So what we're asking for is to put that hardship loan back into the plan, so that if someone does have a financial hardship, they can take a loan from their money. They do have to pay it back, and they have to pay it back within five years based on IRS law. So that's what we're asking for.
All right, makes sense. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Mr. Miller, please call to roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Mcusker.
Yes. Resolution carries. "Do I have a motion to authorize the notice of intent to proceed and bid approval based on the successful review of the 2023 road paving bid to Ed. N. Abenizio Contractors Incorporated for total base bid amount of $549,055.40?"
So moved.
Second.
Krista.
Thank you, Chair Mcusker. On May 30th, last Tuesday, bids were opened for the 2023 road program with four bidders. Ed. Abenizio Contractors was the low bidder for the base bid in the amount of $549,055.40. And we are recommending that a notice of intent to award be issued to Ed. Abenizio Contractors.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. "Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of the single-use plastic bag ban ordinance?"
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair Mcusker. So we're here, step one. But there was a lot of steps that got us to really this step one. And it started roughly over about a year ago as the Board of Supervisors requested that the Environmental Advisory address the issue of use of single and disposable, single-use plastic bags. The EAB, as they are known, had already been working with many of our surrounding communities. It is a nice consortium of environmental folks working in the same direction on many environmental issues. So this was not something new to them. And they took this request. They continued to work closely with their neighbors over probably the last 12 months or so in drafting an ordinance, an ordinance that would be very similar to others that our neighboring communities have adopted, but one that would end the use of single-use plastic bags. The township, along with the coalition, and there was about 14 folks, 14 townships, boroughs, have been working. Several of them have already passed the ban. We know that the city of Philadelphia has it in effect. And our neighbor, state neighbor to the east also, New Jersey, has it in effect. In terms of this ordinance, what is being proposed is a couple things. It would ban single-use plastic bags, non-recycled contact paper bags. It would allow reusable bags meeting specific criteria and paper bags with a minimum of 40% post-consumer recycled content. A minimum fee of 15 cents must be charged for each bag given to customers. This fee is retained by the business and noted on the receipt. Plastic straws and plastic utensils will be provided only upon request by the customer. Some types of bags are exempt, including bags used for produce, meat, fish, poultry, prepared foods, baked goods, dry cleaning, newspapers, trash bags, and live animals, like crickets. Signage will be required to be posted to educate the consumers. The EAB went as far as to survey our local businesses where, in which this would impact. They received no negative comments back, more inquiries about when is this going to take effect. So, which brings us to that point. Tonight, we have the authorization to advertise this ordinance. The Board adopts, authorizes that advertisement. It will then be moved forward. We will advertise it at our July meeting. The Board can consider adoption of the ordinance. One of the things in the ordinance is that it will take effect 90 days from the date of adoption. The reason being is, while a lot in the community know that it's coming, we still want to be able to give those that this impacts an opportunity to further prepare and get ready for the ban on single-use plastic bags. I would be remiss not to recognize a couple people who are joining us. One, virtually, our Chair of our Environmental Advisory Board, Deb Shiro, a member of our Advisory Board in person, Karen Kabnik. They have worked with their fellow Board members extremely hard to get it to this point. A lot of discussions, a lot of kind of drafts, a lot of revisions, and really a lot of working, again, with the partners. Because what they're trying to do is have something that's similar, because a lot of people don't know necessarily when they're going, crossing that township or that community line and what the rules will be. So the more that we can keep it the same, the more impact that this will have for the environment. So certainly, while I'm explaining this, all the kudos really go to the Environmental Advisory Board and those folks for their diligent work on this ordinance. So before you today is your authorization to advertise this ordinance that was recommended by the White Marsh Township Environmental Advisory Board.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. And again, I'd like to echo the thanks to Deb and Karen and the work of the EAB on getting this through to this point. And also, all the hard work in communicating it out to the businesses and to our residents. I think that's very important when we do things like this. So thank you very much. Any other board comment?
I just want to echo all that you're saying, Fran, Karen, and Deb, and the EAB. I mean, what patience and diligence. So, so greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any public comment?
I just want to thank Deb. She really did the lion's share. But we all worked on it, but Deb really did the lion's share. And I thank you, Rick, for making it happen, and the Board for all your support.
Thanks, Karen. I think Deb has her hand up on Zoom there.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for supporting us. So it was an easy process.
Thanks, Deb. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations. "Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a sign in the ultimate right of way at 1032 Hector Street?"
So moved.
Second.
So we'll go over to Charlie.
Thank you, Chair Mcusker. I'm going to share my screen for a second, please.
Now you can.
Thank you. This is for the mixed-use building at the corner of Lee Street and East Hector Street. You may recall this land development being processed several years ago. The building is now inhabited. This is the building that has commercial and office uses on the first floor and apartments on the second and third floor. It's the former site of Seventh Heaven. Most people know what that is, what that was. In any event, one of the main first-floor tenants is Spring Mill Veterinary Hospital, and they would like to put a sign on the side of the building, a monument sign, in the location of the X here. This is Hector Street. This is Lee Street. It's in the ultimate right of way of Lee Street, but it is no further forward than the corner of the building. And as a result of that location, it is not going to be increasing any psychosis issues at that corner. I reviewed this with Chief Ward, Police Department, and he agreed because of the location. He said no issues with this. So staff is recommending approval of this, and they will move forward with their sign.
Thank you. Do you have any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. "Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 7251 Beach Road versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the increased assessment for 2022 to 2023, requiring a payment of $373.40 to the township for real estate taxes?"
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair Mcusker. We're going to be doing a couple of these, and these were all appeals filed, and they generally are, by the Colonial School District. They're the largest taxing authority of the three. This is a settlement between the property owner and the school district, which requires the township's authorization. As mentioned, it's 7251 Beach Road. In this case, the assessment was increased, and it was for the one year of 2023. As a result, the taxpayer will owe $373.40 to the township for that year, taxing year.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. "Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 551 East 10th Avenue versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the increased assessment for 2023, requiring a payment of $435.37 to the township for real estate taxes?"
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Again, this is a settlement between the school district and the property owner. In this case, again, the assessment was increased for the year 2023. The result is an additional $435.37 to the township in real estate taxes for that year.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. "Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 506, 510, and 512 Pennsylvania Avenue versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the increased assessment for 2022, 2023, requiring a total payment of $1,356.56 to the township for real estate taxes?"
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair Mcusker. What I will say is, I did group these four together. The reason being, they're all one property, given that it is the BMW dealership. Again, this was a settlement between the school district and the taxer, and the tax property owner. In this case, for all three, for the years of 2022 to 2023, it results in an assessment increase and a payment to the township for those years in the amount of $1,356.56 in real estate taxes.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. "Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $935,920.32 and payroll totaling $603,742.92, and pension paid costs totaling $4,111.29 for May 2023?"
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the public comment period. Any public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert, or Bob Dampman. I live at 426 Flower Town Road, which is the corner of Fountain Green Roads and Flower Town and adjacent to White Marsh, or, sorry, Erdenheim Farm. So my wife and I have lived there since 2007. My concern is about the condition of the portion of what is known to Dump Road. It's approximately 2,000 feet long and runs to utility access and has always been a walking, open walking area just outside our property lines. Between, there's 15 homes between Fountain Green Road and Erdenheim Farm there. The, and it's a part of the property, about 1,500 feet is Erdenheim Farm. The top 400, 500 is hill property, the hill at White Marsh. So Township Code, Chapter 114, requires that weeds within 25 feet of an adjoining property be tended to and removed. Throughout spring, summer, and fall, the weeds, including thistle, stinging nettle, thorn bushes, and now poison ivy, grow in this area, along the poorly maintained path and our homes. And these weeds have made their way into our gardens through seeds and, you know, through, through the air. One of my neighbors did write to Mr. Miller early, early this week about this, and I've written to him several times about it. Prior to 2017, when the fence was erected, the area was maintained, and residents could walk the entire length of the path, up to the southernmost part of our neighborhood, which is the top of the hill, actually, Pheasant Lane. So it's a pleasant walking area for people with dogs, with kids. But eventually, according to the township plan, it's been identified it's an area that might become a trail. And Krista told me tonight that there's trail, will probably be across the street from my house in the next year or two, the county trail. So it's a good connecting point. But the main thing is about the weeds. They were cut about a month ago, about four weeks ago, but they're now over two feet tall again in this area. And they've never been cut at the very top 400, 500 feet next to the hill, only the next to the Erdenheim Farm property. So one of our neighbors did write to Rick on, on your Tuesday, I think it was, and his wife is very allergic to poison ivy, even airborne. So these have not been tended to so far this week. Tuesday, I believe it was, or Monday afternoon, I happened to meet Bob Stabinski on site. He was doing an inspection at the request of Rick. And he, I was able to explain a little bit about the history of the path and the road, and point out the property lines, which are not, they're very clear when you know where they are, because it's the utility lines. Bob informed me that he was told by the hill that they currently are on a two-week rotation to take care of those weeds. So they've been supposed to have been taking care of those weeds every two weeks, but that has never happened. So it only happens when we contact the township, and then a few days, usually, a team comes out and does that. But I don't think it's our responsibility as residents to have to contact the township, to have to enforce this, and et cetera. So the current location of the fence is not blocking the path. It's the overgrowth of the weeds and the plant materials that are blocking the path. So on behalf of the residents of Fountain Green Road, Barbary Road, and Pheasant Lane, which is about 58 houses, asking the township to enforce the ordinance concerning weeds and unhindered safe access the entire length of the path. No, thank you.
Thank you. Sounds reasonable. I think we can, maybe I'll make a phone call to our contacts over there tomorrow.
Yeah, we've been in touch with them, you know, numerous times, and we will continue to press them to make sure that this is done.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Just to note again, that the top part has never been cleared. So there's five years of growth up there. And sometimes neighbors go with their cheers or whatever and try to clear it a little bit. But when they come out, the team that comes out and does it, does the 1,500 feet, not the last 400 feet. And the hill, I'm understanding is, they have control of the entire length of that property due to the T car. So it's not the foundation they've sort of ceded. I mean, is that correct, that they've ceded their right to, they maintain it, I believe?
Yes, they're maintaining.
Yes, they're maintaining it because it's still considered a construction access.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So, and, you know, it's a never-ending story, that road. The town, the neighbors, to conclude, that when the neighbors fought about this many times, you know, many years ago, we were thinking, okay, well, we, okay, maybe in two years, two, three years, three, three years, this is all going to be done. But it's been six years now. So, and five years extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, Ron Seon, 456 Hillside Road. Just one question. I had contacted Rick today about up-and-coming issue on the Little League batting cage, and he said he would let me know when it will be on the agenda. And I was just wondering if there's, if we could be a little bit better or a little bit more precise. Is it going to be a month? Is it going to be two months? You know, next year or whenever? Just so we can, the neighborhood is a little concerned, and we want to get our thoughts together.
I don't know your answer to that.
Yeah, I don't think we can be more precise at this point. There's a lot of information that we need to gather and get it to the board. So at this point, the best we can do is we will actually let you know as opposed to, I know you're looking at the agendas, but I don't know. I can't answer that. We're, we're at the June meeting. I can't.
Usually, I mean, you get the agenda posted, you know, the day before, a couple days before, and
We posted a week of, the Friday before.
And, you know, that's good. But as I said, we have a lot of residents in the neighborhood who are concerned about it, and we're trying to gather our thoughts, put, change our presentation, and it will take some time. But hopefully it will be sometime this summer, or maybe hopefully.
Ron, I'm not going to commit to anything because it's not fair to anybody involved, you involved, Little League involved, the board involved. There's a lot of moving parts right now. I can't commit to a time. All I can commit that, we'll make sure everybody is aware of it. If people need more time, we're happy to work with them with more time. But it's not fair to commit to a time right now.
All right, we'll keep our eyes and ears open to the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Any board comment? All right, I'd like to announce an executive meeting tonight. We discussed real estate and personnel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Have a good evening.